We had some technical problems.
We were having technical difficulties. The meeting starts at 2:00. It's about to start right now. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, welcome to the City of Treasure Island Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for February 20th, 2025. If you have a, if you wish to speak on a topic which is on today's agenda, a speaker's card is available at the table and the, over at the entrance and must be completed and given to the chairperson. Please do not address the board from your seat, but rather from the podium where your comments can be heard by all and recorded as required by Florida statute. Unscheduled topics may be presented under the public comments section of the agenda. Thanks for everybody's patience. We did have a couple of technical computer problems. Okay, if everybody would silence their cell phones so we don't have any interruptions and could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Stephanie, if we could have a roll call.
Richard Harris.
Here.
Michael Herdibees, absent. Marvin Shavelin.
Here.
Grant Smith.
Here.
Ross Sanchez.
Here.
Chris Downing, absent. Jennifer Von Velour.
Very good.
Yay!
Thank you.
And Gary Patenziano.
Here.
All right, we don't have any minutes to approve. Status update on prior planning and zoning cases. Anything you want to tell us about, Jesse?
I can tell you a couple just off the top of my head. Obviously, I didn't have time to give you. So typically, Jennifer, just so you know, I usually give like an update of all like the previous cases that we have, but because of everything else that's happening at the moment, I haven't had a chance to put that together. So some off the top of my head on Rowley's Gas Station where you're still waiting to hear back from corrections comments that were sent out. Pirate Square, the proposed parking lot, we have received comments back for that. That's being sent off to be reviewed by our engineering consultant. And then also the Baubau Shores, I believe, if I remember, that was a 10-unit condominium unit. They are still in the process of working on permits for FDOT. And those are the biggest ones off the top of my head. My bad, the proposed parking garage next across from the Rowley's Gas Station. We still have not heard anything else about that one yet.
So the, just to clarify your comments, you have gotten a permit for the Rowley Station and there are revisions?
Site plan.
Okay.
How long ago was that that you got?
I'm sorry, I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm sorry.
But the other thing that I wasn't aware of, but Pirate Square Parking Area actually has turned into a plan?
Yes, yeah, we did receive their, they sent their comments back to corrections that we sent out and we received their plan plus everything else that came along with our engineering consultant's corrections. And it's been sent off to be reviewed by them again.
Okay, well, that's good. Things are.
So if it works out correctly and review's done, hopefully it should be coming to next month's P&amp;Z meeting.
Very good. Thank you. All right, now if you would like to explain some hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair. The items the City of Treasure Island Planning and Zoning Board are hearing today are quasi-judicial in nature. That means they are administered sort of like a court cases where two parties will have a chance to present evidence and make arguments. The first party which will present first is the city. Second is the applicant, a person or legal entity that owns property in the city that is requesting some sort of relief from the city. After the city presents, the applicant will present their argument if they have any additional arguments. And each party will have an opportunity to ask the other questions. After both parties have presented, the board will hold a discussion on what was presented, initiate an order approving, approving with conditions, or denying the relief the applicant is requesting. If you are in the audience but not here as a party, you will have an opportunity to speak during public comment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, ex parte communication disclosure. Anybody have any thing they need to disclose other than me? And I will be recusing myself from the third case today because that happens to be my next door neighbor. Okay, but we'll start out with case number one. 10A Platte-000485-20247675 Base Shore Drive Preliminary Platte Application to Subdivide an Unplatted Track of Land. This is a case that we previously heard and approved about doing a lot split on this property. It will require a platte. Our applicant is Mr. Hendrick Bazant. Please approach the podium and state your case.
Actually, I'm, sorry, Chair, could I back up? No, I believe I just noticed on the agenda we didn't actually swear in.
Oh, that is true. It's not on here. Thank you for noticing that. If you are going to speak on a issue on today's agenda, please stand and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm the testimony you are about to give before the Planning and Zoning Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Now you can go ahead. You have to remember always to do that.
Does everybody remember the case? Yeah, I've been here twice now and this is about splitting this lot in half. You know, what we're really accomplishing by doing it is in favor of the community. We're going from an allowable four units on the lot if left as one to only one per parcel, so a total of two units only by splitting it in half.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? I think everybody except for Jennifer kind of knows about this one because it came before this board as a variance. And anybody got anything for Mr. Bazant? Seeing none, please have a seat and we'll have the city staff give their presentation.
All right, so yeah, just a reminder, so this is case number PLAT-000485-2024 and this site location is 7675 Base Shore Drive. Pretty much the biggest thing I want to highlight is history on this. So June 27, 2024, there were two variance requests that were approved by the Planning and Zoning Board to reduce the lot width from 70 feet to 58.75 feet. And as we all know, this is a preliminary platte, so there's a certain criteria that has to be met and that is stated on your staff report from pages five up until page six. So the staff recommends the proposed preliminary platte be approved with the following conditions. Condition one, the final platte of the subdivision shall be prepared and submitted for final approval within one year from the date of the preliminary approval per Treasure Island Code of Ordinances, Section 74-31 Subsection 8. Condition two, the final platte must be prepared in accordance with the conditions of their preliminary approval by the Planning and Zoning Board, Treasure Island Code of Ordinances, Section 74-132, and Florida statutes, Chapter 177. Condition three, prior to a building permit being issued for construction, a subdivision platte shall be recorded with the county clerk of the circuit court per Treasure Island Code of Ordinances, Section 68-400 Subsection 3. The community development department is unable to accept the building permit application until new parcel numbers have been assigned. And just to give you a follow-up of what the next steps is going to be. So depending on the outcome of this, we will obtain an opinion of title from the city attorney. The final platte will come back, will be reviewed by the consultants prior to the next P&amp;Z meeting, and then the final platte will then go before the city commission.
Okay, any questions of city staff on this case? Seeing none, anybody in the audience today to speak on this case? Seeing none, we will, oh, Bert, I did not see you there, Ron. You can come and speak whatever you want to speak about on this case only at the podium.
My name's Ron DiBiagi. I'm not that familiar with this.
What's your address?
Treasure Island, Florida.
Okay.
Isle of Palms, Sunset Beach. I've got a couple places. Anything else you want to?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I'm not too familiar with this. That's why it's going to be hard for me to, but I'm not aware of what, how many buildings are going up? Is it just two on one lot?
No, that's the whole deal with this. It's a piece of land, total width about 116 feet wide. It's going to end up being two single-family homes.
Right, now.
The current house, the one structure that is there now is being converted to a single-family house and is being raised. The other house on this property to the south will be a new structure.
Okay, so the one here is already being raised?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm not too concerned with that. I'm familiar with that. The other building lot, there's two units going on there. Am I correct?
No, it's vacant right now.
The proposal is to build two units on there, am I correct?
No, that is incorrect. Single-family house.
Well, one, two single-family houses, right?
There's one being raised. That is one single-family house.
Yeah.
The other lot is vacant. That will be a second single-family house. There will only be two dwelling units when this project is complete.
Do you mind if I approach it?
Go ahead. Just got to make sure we can hear you.
So you're saying this lot here, there's only one single-family house going up on that lot?
Yes, come back to the podium so we can hear you and, but that is correct. There's going to be one single-family house on that lot.
Well, which lot is being split in two then?
That total piece of property. It's 116, it's 116 feet wide.
Is going to, the one that's being raised is going to stay.
That is correct.
And there's going to be another single-family house put on the other lot?
That is correct.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to get an idea of what was going on. Thank you.
All right, anybody else in the audience to speak involved on this case? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We've all heard about this before except for Jennifer and hopefully that brought you up to date a little bit. It's just they can build, the owner I should say, can build if he wanted to for multifamily units. All he wants to do is build two single-family houses and he's going to do so. Any other comments or can we have a motion on this one?
May I just ask a question?
Sure, certainly.
Do we know how soon he plans on beginning construction if he gets this?
He's already under construction. He's starting to raise the northernmost house as we speak.
So the one that's currently there and, okay.
Yeah, and it's being jacked up.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ross, would you, got a question?
Yeah, just real quick for the applicant, conditions listed in the packet, okay with?
Yeah, they are standard. I think we can avoid them, right?
Yep. I just want to make sure. Good? All right, thank you.
So while you're talking, Ross, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion regards to case number Platte-000485-2020, I'm sorry. 000485-2024 at the location 7675 Base Shore Drive in Treasure Island, Florida, 33706. As a member of the Planning and Zoning Board, I am going to make a motion to approve with conditions ones through three listed in my packet.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ross Sanchez, second by Marvin Shavelin. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Marvin Shavelin?
Yes.
Grant Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Bonvolor?
Aye.
Gary Potenziano?
Aye.
Ross Sanchez?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
Yes. Okay, you are approved wherever Hendrick went.
He's ready to go.
Anyway, I'm going to put it on record, Hendrick, since you left, I'm going to say it anyway, you've got one year to get the final plat done. Do not let this approval expire. I know you knew better, but we've seen too many projects that they get their approval, and then they don't do the next step, so make sure you do. Okay, moving on to the next one. Variance zero 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 four eight seven dash two oh two four one zero one one eight Tarpon Drive, variance request to section 68 dash five four one to permit a cantilevered second floor deck and stairs to encroach approximately eight feet into the 30-foot waterfront setback. The applicant is Mr. Carmen Peachey, and he's already at the podium. Go ahead and present your case.
Yeah, hi, my name's Carmen Peachey. I live at 10118 Tarpon Drive, Treasure Island. So as pretty much every resident in Treasure Island, we flood it, you know, pretty bad, so we have decided to elevate our home. In order to do that and stay in compliance with Treasure Island Code, we need a waterside balcony or egress out of our master bedroom, along with a balcony, you know, out of our living space as well. There's no other egress possible for our master bedroom. When we started the process for elevating our home, we had four issues, variance issues that Jesse and my team worked through. We narrowed it down to just one final issue out there. Our balcony will only cantilever into the setback. Our structure for our balcony will stay within...
That's not for you.
Will stay within the current 30-foot setback. So currently today, the way my house sits, my overhang projects three feet into the overhang or into the setback. So we're really not changing the dynamic of views from our neighbors too much here, so we're hopeful because we really don't want to have to go through this again.
Absolutely. Any questions of the applicant from the staff or from the board, excuse me? I'm getting ahead of myself. If you would have a seat then, and Jesse, go ahead with your staff presentation.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to load up the site plan at the same time, but it might come up. There we go. All right, so this is case number VAR dash zero 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 four eight seven dash two zero two four, and the site location is 10118 Tarpon Drive. As the applicant previously stated, we did reduce this from four variance requests down to one, and we were able to do that because of ordinance 2024 dash two seven, which was recently adopted by the city commission on January 27, 2025, where it permits one set of stairs to encroach into the setbacks, therefore the current variance request is only for the encroachment of the proposed stairs and the cantilevered deck five feet into the waterfront setback now. And as you can see in your staff report, analysis of the land development regulations are stated on page seven through eight. Moving on to the staff recommendation, staff recommends approval to a variance request to section 68 dash five four one to permit a cantilevered second floor deck and stairs to encroach five feet into the 30-foot waterfront setback based on the analysis of the criteria in section 70 dash two two one stated above, finding that they have been substantially satisfied and that an unnecessary hardship does exist subject to the following conditions. Condition one, the proposed structure shall be substantially consistent with the plans prepared by C. Michael McCoy Residential Designs Incorporated dated November 21, 2024. And that is all I have for staff.
Okay, any questions of the staff from the board?
No, I, obviously thanks to Catherine and the staff for getting in front of these types of variances. It seems like the, what we had discussed previously as a board on approval for situations like this for people that are trying to raise their house, it seems like three variances getting approved just because of the work that we've prior done, so thanks to Catherine and staff for that. I don't see any issues with this. I mean, this is what we're trying to talk about when it comes to elevating homes in the city.
Okay, anybody in the audience today to speak in regard to this case? Seeing none, any other comments from the board?
Jesse, are you seeing a lot of the lifters permit requests come in? Just out of curiosity, I mean, I know it seems like this applicant's like the Carmen is like the first. I know he's a speed racer, but...
So we've seen a couple, but some are going to have to come back in because people have actually started elevating houses without getting permits at first, so it's going to be a problem. But yeah, there's a couple that we've seen, actually...
Well, thanks to this applicant for doing it the right way.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay, any other comments? We will close the public hearing. My discussion.
I have a question of the applicant. It's a little off topic, but I think you'll appreciate it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Peachey? So you've built a lot of houses in the area?
I have.
And I'm just wondering, I'm sure you're familiar with the Elevate TI controversy?
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering, number one, did you consider bringing Phil in for this project? I mean, I know it wasn't in place, but I just wondered if you went through the process?
I think that if the city approves that, I would be happy to do that. I don't think it's a bad suggestion at all. I think it's a difficult suggestion, you know, to get through. I think a one-foot elevate is going to be much easier, you know, to accomplish than the two-foot, but I, I would like to elevate my first floor, call it the garage slab now, higher if the city would allow.
Do you have any concept of what the cost would be for that particular house you're working on now?
Well, if, my particular house is a little different because we already have property walls that were built by the developer back in the 50s, okay? So even if we do elevate, we don't have water enough that we have to worry about to our neighboring properties. I think that's going to be the biggest challenge when we start elevating homes is where is all the water going to, you know, go? And so if you have to put property walls in, they're very expensive to put in, okay? Unfortunately, the way that engineers read property walls, okay, you know, homeowners want every inch of their property, okay? So if that wall sits on the very edge of the property, for however tall that wall is, okay, that foundation has to be that wide as well, okay? So if it's a six-foot wall, you need a six-foot foundation. And you have to bury it four feet in the ground and put counterweight on it. If it's a four-foot wall, you need a four-foot foundation. I'm finding this by every engineer that we're building up and down the beaches, okay? It's absurd. It's very, very expensive. So two six-foot walls down the sides of property, I mean, you're adding $100,000 plus very easily, you know, to this, not including the fill and raising the seawall, you know, and the slab and things like that, so it's, it's a couple hundred thousand dollar request.
So do you think your future clients are going to be on board with that? They're going to want to spend that money?
My clients, probably.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a good answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
But let's remember that you don't have to put in retaining walls with what we've previously put in front of the commission with the conditions.
Right. I just want to get his take because there's a lot of building...
But in general, I mean, not that we're interrogating you, but in general...
No, I understand.
Allowing filter is something that the city needs to be looking into.
I, I think they should.
Perfect.
A good thing. I just, you know, when I sat at the Elevate TI meeting when the company came in and discussed their options, and my concern was, you know, was all the water runoff, but, you know, his thought was, okay, this guy can only go up 10%, okay, higher than that guy. Well, you know, my client that I just built the house for last year now is going to be the low guy in the neighborhood, okay? And this guy's going to go up 10% because he's not going to be allowed to go the full two feet, then this guy can go a little bit higher. I think there's some challenges there that have to be worked through.
Since we opened this door, I just want to make a few clarifications. I've seen your house from across the pass. You're currently at grade.
I am.
Yeah, that's, so you're going to be jacking up your house, how many feet about?
To the first level?
Right.
Ever take 12?
So, you know, the situation is if you wanted to add, like, let's just say your finished floor of your current house is about six, about. If you wanted to make it your finished floor of what will be your new garage up to eight, you would have to bring in two feet of fill. What you could do rather than, if you did not have the security walls or property walls on each side, you could do it with two-foot-high stem walls as well.
You could.
You know, I mean, that's just another alternative. Regardless, I'm not saying it's cheap, but I tell you, I don't know how many people on this board and in this room had water in their house. I know a lot of us did. I live in a stealth house. I still had 30 inches of water in my garage. It was a royal pain in the neck, and so we appreciate you doing, you know, raising your house. You know, the fact that you're going to get one shot at this because it's expensive to raise a house.
It is.
And if your finished floor garage is six, you're going to get water if it ever happens again. If it gets up to eight, if you could raise it eight, hey, if Helene ever came back, you'd be right at the edge.
I would love to raise it.
God only knows what's going to happen next time.
I mean, that's four less steps that you have to walk up every day. I just, I mean, there's a lot of pluses.
Oh, yeah. But anyway, we appreciate what you've done for this community. I've seen your houses in the past, and we appreciate you living here in Treasure Island and appreciate your work.
Yeah. How long you been on the island for, Carmen?
1969.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? With that, we'll close the...
Good luck and congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you all.
With that, we'll close the public hearing. You know, this is the type of variance that I think does exhibit hardship. You're not getting closer to your neighbor. It's strictly in your backyard. You're not putting it out in the front yard, which would get it kind of a aberration for the rest of the neighborhood. This is for the man's backyard, and he owns that backyard. He's only going eight feet into his 30-foot waterfront setback. I can definitely support this. With that, any other comments, or would somebody like to make a motion to approve this setback variance?
I'll make a motion regarding case number VAR dash zero 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 four eight seven dash two oh two four. The planning are, I move to approve a variance request to section 68 dash five forty-one to permit a cantilevered second floor deck and stairs to encroach five feet into the 30-foot waterfront setback with the following condition, the proposed structure shall be substantially consistent with plans prepared by C. Mitchell McCoy Residential Designs Incorporated dated November 21, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. No, did that, I want to make sure that our motions are, did that sound property you? We just want to make sure that...
We got the condition there, right?
Oh, yeah. We just want to make sure everything's covered, so with that, can we have a roll call vote?
Grant Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Bonvolor?
Aye.
Marvin Shavelin?
Yes.
Gary Potenziano?
Aye.
Ross Sanchez?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Peachey. Go build a house as soon as you get your building permit. Go raise a house and build a deck. Okay. Third case today, variance zero 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 four nine five dash two oh two five three seven one Bay Plaza after the fact variance request to section 68 dash four sixty, parentheses two, close parentheses, to prevent pool equipment not adjacent to the principal structure. I am going to recuse myself, since this is my next-door neighbor, but as the next-door neighbor, I just want to make the comment that I have no objections to this variance here whatsoever.
Chair, if I may, I just want to go over something briefly regarding when you abstain.
Okay.
Okay, so under Florida statute, as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board, you have an affirmative duty to vote. There are two exceptions to that. The first is if you have a conflict of interest, that would be if you owned an interest in the property, and that's not the case, right, Chair?
I do not.
The second is only in a quasi-judicial proceeding like this, and that is if you have bias, in which I believe is what you're saying, because you're the neighbor. You don't want to have an appearance of bias?
I don't want to have appearance, but I have discussed this case with the applicant and the applicant's builder.
Okay, so you have an ex parte issue and the bias?
Yes.
Okay. So you can abstain after that, I just want that to be clear.
I think it would just be the safest method if I did.
I agree.
And we do have a full quorum, so no problem today. Ross, we're going to put it in your capable hands.
Sounds good. We good? I can move forward?
You can move forward.
All right, so in regards to the case number VAR dash zero 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 four nine five dash two zero two four, I'll take the lead on this as chair due to Richard's ex parte communications as well as the discussions he had with the attorney. So with that being said, is there an applicant present today that has a presentation?
My name's Klaus Vilebro. I'm the owner. Bill Saxton, who is building my house, is unfortunately in the hospital and not doing too well, but therefore I'm here myself. This is the last part of the four-year project, and we were instructed from the electric company to turn the staircase for the deck up to the meter around, so the stairs came from the south side instead, which eliminated the possibility for the pool equipment to come up against the wall where it was originally planned. On top of that, you can see right down the middle, like you spoke before, we actually do have a six-foot wall on both sides, so drainage is a must for the, for the property, and that comes right down in the middle, in between the wood deck and the current placement of the pool equipment. It is maybe further than it looks, but it's actually only 54 inches from the original location, so in order to get the drainage in, we had to move it to the side. So that's basically the only deviation on the whole project. That's about it.
Thank you, Chair. What was your name? Okay, it's on here, thank you. Any questions of the applicant by the board?
Do we know how far the equipment is from the wall, the fence, or whatever?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight?
We have actually had to split on the backside. There's no other swale, so there's swales on both sides of the pool equipment.
Okay.
Is Richard in the lot 13A closer to the...
No.
On the other side.
Chairman's on the other side.
But I've spoken to him, and he has no problem with it.
What about the property owner on the other side?
Has no problem.
They would have been notified about this, so... All right, being that there are no other questions, thank you, sir. Staff report?
All right, so this is, sorry. So case number VAR dash zero 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 four nine five dash two dash two zero two four, site location three seven one Bay Plaza. I'll just give a little background on this one. The applicant has recently constructed a single-family residence and swimming pool on a subject property and are seeking a variance to locate the associated swimming, swimming pool equipment up to 15 feet from the primary structure, since section 68 dash four six zero requires that pool equipment be located adjacent to the principal structure. Also, another, a variance to reduce the 10-foot pool setback to five feet for the pool location was granted on April 20, 2010, and as the applicant stated, they have indicated that the proposed pool equipment cannot be located adjacent to the house because of the location of the required platform to access the electric meter that is adjacent to the house. The applicants have further indicated that the pool equipment cannot be located any closer to the house because it would conflict with site drainage. And as you can see in the staff report on page five through page seven, that is staff's analysis of variance criteria. And moving on to staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of an after-the-fact variance request to section 68 dash four six zero subsection two to permit pool equipment not to be adjacent to the principal structure based on the analysis of the criteria in section 70 dash two two one stated above, finding that they have been substantially satisfied and that an unnecessary hardship does exist, does exist, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, the proposed structure shall be substantially consistent with the survey prepared by Geodata Services dated December 10, 2024. And that is all I have for staff.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions from the board to city staff?
None.
I don't think there's any cards that were submitted. Any questions from the audience on this topic? Okay. Being that I hear none, we'll close the public hearing, and if there's any board discussion, great. If there's a motion, that would also be great as well. Yeah, I'm not allowed to make a motion.
I'll move to approve case number VAR-000495-2024, 371 Bay Plaza, Treasure Island, Florida. Move to approve an after-the-fact variance request to Section 68-460, parentheses, two, to permit pool equipment not to be adjacent to the principal structure with the following condition: The proposed structure shall substantially be substantially consistent with the survey prepared by GeoData Services dated December 10, 2024.
Okay.
Motion, our motion has been recognized by Mr. Shavelin and seconded by Mr. Grant. Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith. Sorry, Grant.
No worries.
Roll call vote, please.
Jennifer Bonvolor?
Aye.
Gary Patenziano?
Aye.
Marvin Shavelin?
Yes.
Grant Smith?
Yes.
Ross Sanchez?
Yes. Awesome. You're all set. We will welcome the chairman back to his chair.
Cool. Thank you for taking over for that one. Good to see the pool in action. They've had a lot of cleanup to do after the storm, unfortunately. Okay, public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing none? Reports and comments of city attorney, staff, and board members. We'll start out with the city attorney. You got anything, Noah?
I do not, but I believe city staff does.
Yes, they do. We all had a pass handout earlier about the duties of the Planning and Zoning Board and what we're supposed to do, and we just had three great examples of three cases, and but Catherine wants to go over some of the items that were brought up last Thursday. And go ahead, and we'll all have comments for you.
Okay.
But you go ahead.
I've got like five different things to talk about, so let me just go through the housekeeping items first. Mr. Herdabees has resigned from the board because he has moved off the island.
Okay.
So I forgot to let the clerk know that, but that's why he is no longer here. He submitted his resignation.
Quitter.
Was he?
In a condo, right?
The question I-
Just kidding, Michael.
-had in regard to that, Gary has been faithfully serving on this board. He is an alternate after, how many years you been here? Three years?
Three.
Can we get him to step in Mr. Herbertage's place somehow? I don't know if we can or not.
I'm gonna ask Tia, she's on vacation today, to email you where the vacancies are, because that was requested by Chris Downing. So I'll make sure it goes out to all of you. That is something that's advertised, and that decision is made by the City Commission.
Right. It's just-
But I believe we have two vacancies, and that's what I'm not, don't have, if they're district-specific, because I don't know who's serving in which district, and there's district representatives.
Well, I know that Chris Downing is at large, and everybody else is, well, I'm at large, I believe. We have one more at large.
That's why I want the official records from the clerk, how they were appointed by the resolutions, just to make sure we've got this right.
Yeah.
You know, I have my opinion of what I think it is, but I would like to have all the resolutions in front of me before I state that in a public meeting.
I do believe that Michael was specific to District 1, since he lives on Isle Capri. Gary lives on Isle Palms, so I'm not sure that would work, but let's see what we can do, because-
He's in Paradise.
Excuse me, Paradise. One of those P islands.
The fancy one.
I meant to say Paradise, but anyway.
So I will get that information to you?
In recognition of his service, I'd like to make him a full member. Just making that comment.
That suggestion would go to the commission. These applications will be advertised publicly for people to apply, and the commission makes that determination.
Gary, I recommend you fill out an application. I know you've kinda done that already, but just putting it on the record.
Well, we need to make sure there's a seat that he can move into, so that-
Oh, absolutely.
Let us just get the-
Just let me know.
Proper information to you, and then you will know.
Absolutely.
I don't wanna make representations here that we haven't verified. The reason we don't have an LPA today is, we were asked at the last meeting, we had four members present last week, to have a special LPA meeting today to discuss the powers of the LPA Board. But those powers are actually attributed to the P&amp;Z Board. So I've handed out, hand out to you an excerpt from the code from Chapter 70, which is our Planning and Zoning chapter, and the specific excerpts are from the chapter, the section on Planning and Zoning Board. And so, what you will see there on the first page under 70-9, you'll see the highlighted part talks about the powers of the LPA. So the Planning and Zoning Board shall serve as and constitute the local planning agency as required by state statutes. It's the function and duty of the local planning agency to review and recommend adoption of amendments to the comp plan, new land development regulations, as well as amendments, changes, modification of those land development regulations, review development agreements, as well as amendments to those, and actions on rezoning. So those are the code duties of the local planning agency. There is a section on the backside of this page, 70-10. These are powers of the Planning and Zoning Board. So there were some questions that have come in, both at the meeting last week and by email to us, asking what role the Board plays in, you know, the future determinations of the city. So this outlines that. So the Planning and Zoning Board may make reports and recommendations relating to the planning and development of the city to public officials and agencies, utilities, civic, professional, and other organizations for the citizens of the city. It may recommend to the City Commission programs for public improvement and the financing thereof. It may require information. They have the power to require information from the city manager, who shall upon request furnish information to the Board in a reasonable time. They have a right of entry in the performance of its functions. The Planning and Zoning Board and its members or employees may enter upon any land and make examinations and surveys and place and maintain necessary monuments and marks therein. Very unusual powers. And then redevelopment and reconstruction. The Planning and Zoning Board may make and adopt a plan for the replanning, reconstruction, or redevelopment of any area or zoning district which may be destroyed in whole or part by hurricane. I'll skip the other disasters. And then generally, the Planning and Zoning Board shall have such powers as may be necessary to enable it to perform its purposes and to promote municipal planning. So that kind of elaborates on some of the questions that came up at the last meeting as to the powers of the Planning and Zoning Board. Now, there are other statutory requirements, or there are many other requirements that will come into play. Any ordinances that would need to be passed are through the City Commission. There are a lot of other levels of planning that have to go into place to implement change, things like changes to the comp plan, or things like changes to make the comp plan consistent with the land development regulations, so we just wanna emphasize that. I've been asked by one member of the Board if we could set up a time in April to talk about this in more detail, which seems like a reasonable request. As you probably all know, staff is a little bit busy at the moment with multiple responsibilities, trying to get permits out of here and trying to, you know, get all this new development approved at the same time. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes. So that's a report on the powers, and need to get some direction on that. The next thing I have is an update on Elevate-
Hold on, can we just, can we, can we address that topic, like the last, like, bullet?
Sure.
You just went over, because I think I'm the board member that had requested something for April. So I mean-
If you'd like, yeah, please discuss.
So I just, I'm not available in March. It's the Vouse Bar, week of Vouse Bar. Everyone knows that. I don't, I cannot be here on a Thursday because of that week. So in April, I am requesting, I just want, and by the way, thank you for providing us our powers, very valuable position that this board has for the future of our city. I just wanna kinda get on the same page on how we as a board can help the staff, the city manager, on trying to figure out what is our next steps in regards to growth and progress within the city, from a commercial standpoint, and whether if we have to touch on some of the residential stuff. So that's where my inquiry came in. Do I ask, like, do we put it as an agenda item to say, can we put this on as topic of discussion, or how does that work? Do you need like a formal request, or?
I think we would just put it as a workshop item on the agenda for April.
Okay. I would like to do that. I don't know if-
The board would like to do.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine, for putting this together.
Sure.
Sorry, Catherine, is the rest of the board on board with that?
I got some nods, but I didn't, yeah.
Just so we have it on the record, everyone wants to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be gone for a week, so I'll let you know the dates, so hopefully we could coordinate.
Thank you.
P&amp;Z is the third Thursday of every month.
I think I'm gone that week.
At 2 p.m.
The other thing, I know there was some conversation at the last meeting, and Joan can come up and talk about it, about creating some kind of committee, board, whatever it is, to look at the funding, disaster funding that's coming from the county and coming back to the city. And I wanted to let you know that the city manager has put together a voluntary board that is working, not a board, a voluntary group that is working on that and making recommendations that go back to the City Commission. She can tell you the compilation of the board. I don't even have that information, sorry. They are not a board. I did not say that.
Group.
Group, a group. Talking to a board, so.
I mean, what, sorry.
They've already started, and I know the train has left the station there on that group you've started. Are we duplicating that effort? What benefit does that do? If we start over here and they're over there, at some point we'd have to bring these two things together, so maybe, since they've started out of the station, let them go, and maybe we just have a follow-up meeting.
Why wouldn't it come through us?
That's what I was gonna say. I mean, is there a way to tell the commission? Is there a way to?
Let me finish, guys.
Whoa.
Let me finish, please.
Okay, go ahead, Gary.
But-
You got the floor.
Now I'll say, why haven't they come this way?
So what I was gonna say is this, and I'll have Joan explain this, because I am not involved in this at all, but this is related to funding that's post-disaster funding and how it is spent within the city. So it's really not looking at a future development proposal, it's looking at funding that is basically coming back to the city. And let me have Joan explain the purpose of it and how it can be spent, because it is very specific, and most of you weren't here at the last meeting.
Okay. And just remember, we just read something in this section that says, "The Planning and Zoning Board may make reports, recommendations, yada, 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 to citizens. It may recommend to the City Commission programs for public improvements and the financing thereof." Okay, I just wanna make sure that I read that correctly. Thank you.
And what is this group we're talking about?
She's gonna explain it to us right now.
I'm gonna explain it in more detail, because I'm not involved in it, I don't wanna-
Good afternoon, Joan Goodrich, Economic Development Director for-
Oh, hey, welcome!
So nice to see some of you again, and nice to put faces to-
You got a blank canvas around here.
New friends, so this group that we're talking about, it's a working group that the city manager has put in place. Right now, we're calling it Rebuild Treasure Island Working Group, and it's basically designed to help the city identify funding sources for projects, programs, and initiatives that will ultimately make decisions on together, moving forward as we rebuild. As far as sources of funding, what I learned, so we, well, we had our inaugural meeting last Monday, we'll meet again the next three Mondays as we, in particular, look at the $814 million that the county, Pinellas County, has received from HUD for CDBG-DR, which stands for Community Development Block Grants Disaster Recovery, from Washington. So in the CDBG-DR, there's gonna be a lot of acronyms, so forgive me for that. There's three buckets of opportunities that we have. One, to work on our housing needs, unmet housing needs post-storm. The second is our unmet needs in infrastructure, and the third is our unmet needs in economic revitalization. So those are the three buckets specifically for the CDBG-DR. What I learned during these past couple of days is I've identified with the team that there's actually 30 different funding sources that we will potentially use as we look forward to building, rebuilding Treasure Island. That includes, out of the 30, as an example, Treasure Island's general fund, our cash reserves, our building fund. It'll be county programs and funds that we have access to. There'll be other federal funds that we'll have access to, like FEMA, public assistance programs that start with the letter A, go to G, and also includes Z. So currently, I'm putting together a matrix, you know, trying to compile a lot of the information that the team has been working on now for months since the post-storm. This also includes, now that I'm looking at Jesse, it includes even funding sources with our local mitigation strategy. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that are just churning, but we look for, or I look forward, and the team looks forward, to bringing a lot of that clarity back to the Board, our key advisors, our City Commission, other, you know, our community at large, as we figure out what type of priorities we wanna make on programs, projects, and initiatives as we seek to take care of our community. So I don't know what that sounded like to you, so it's just getting started. The train, while the train has, you know, left the station, it has, it's, we're just beginning the work together.
Joan, when does the timeline stop that this submitted request has to be ready to go and presented? I heard a rumor, and you gotta help me with this. I already heard St. Pete got money, and they've gone, and they've got their money, and they're off and running.
So based on the size of St. Pete, they, they went directly to Washington and did get their allocation. I think it's like, don't hold me to the exact number, about $125 million they've already received directly from Washington. As far as, you know, what happens next with this particular funding program for the CDBG-DR, we'll be working the next couple of months with our partners at the county to come up with our, a plan of action, you know, and being ready for when the county, we anticipate, possibly that can come late spring, early summer, where they will open up the $813 million and accept actual plans of action from its municipal partners.
Does that take St. Pete out of that kitty? Are they still back in it?
I don't know. These are some of the questions that I still have to ask on our behalf.
That's a lot of money they've awarded. Boy, that's a big chunk of money we could've used, but it seems like they're digging in, digging in already, so.
Yeah, so I've stuck my nose and forced our way into all of these, you know, so the county has all of these working groups, too. They're a little bit more formalized. They call it the Response Support Function for Housing, the Response Support Function for Infrastructure. So I've just sat on now each call for each of those support functions, and the county's still just getting its hands around the impact, excuse me, the impact of the 2024 storm season. What I appreciate is the openness and collaborative spirit that our county has with us. So, you know, when I started to just- So, you know, when I started to just, you know, stir it up in my own little way, you know, Treasure Island, you know, we're hurting, we need help, we want stronger partnerships. They, everything that we've asked for, they've delivered, you know. So, the county is data, has amazing data points and information that they've been sharing with us. So, as we continue to have this conversation together, so like as an example of a data point that I just received from the county to go along with some of the data our team has been releasing. And I'm happy to share, you know, again, what, what we find. So, the county has actually, actually put together a dashboard that looks at the whole picture of the county and then along with each of its 24 municipalities. So, according to data sources from our county partners, Helene impacted 3,195 of our residential structures. Milton impacted 1,036 of our residential structures. Now, now, why does that matter? Well, you know, that gives us an opportunity to align with what Catherine and our team is seeing on the ground, so we can anticipate how many more permits, what type of activity we're going to see. So, you know, the willingness of our county partners and we were just on a call with our property appraiser, Mr. Twitty, to figure out what data and information does he have, what kind of impact, you know, can we foresee moving forward because we'll have to do all of that forecasting as to, you know, what, what resources we have and just what resources we need to go hunt for as we prioritize activities.
Okay, do, let me jump in here real quick, Gary, and then we'll recognize you next. This advisory board, has it been totally fleshed out? I want to see who's on it. I have heard some interest from members of this board that want to be on it. I want to make sure that the advisory board has the proper expertise. There's a lot of people in this city that have real strong opinions, but we don't want any caves or bananas on that board. A cave is citizens against virtually everything. A banana is build absolutely nothing, absolutely nowhere at any time. And, you know, some of us actually recognize the status of our city at this point. You and I had a discussion about our central business district. Has the board, has this advisory group, I should call it, been totally fleshed out? And then can we get the names of who's on it?
So, just to clarify, Mr. Chair, it's not an advisory board. It's, it's a working group. It's a working group to the city manager at this point. So, advisory board, I think of, you know, the city commission asks, like, y'all are an advisory board to the city commission, so I just want to clarify at that.
The group's primary function is fact-finding, right? Not making, advising anything to the commission?
Correct. So, no recommendations would go to the commission by this group. This is only recommendations that would go to the professional team here.
It's just regardless, we want to make sure that.
I just don't know why I would come here.
We get the proper people on this, in this group, no matter what their function is. I know for a fact that Gary Potenciano has requested his presence in that, as a member of that group. And when I discussed it with him, I said, hey, go for it, you know, if you can serve on both groups or both boards, you know.
Not a board.
Okay. This Planning and Zoning Board and that group, you know, because I once wanted to serve on two boards and you cannot serve on two boards.
I just, if the city manager wants to have a conversation, I mean, like on stuff like this, I mean, we're here every third Thursday of the month at 2:00 P.M. I just feel like if there's stuff that's out there that's available, it should be running through this, especially if it's, like Catherine had mentioned, it does go to the commission from the, from the group. I mean, that was.
Yeah, so.
What we were told. I mean, we should be bringing stuff to the, to the commission.
Right. So, this, this group is not going to bring anything to the city commission.
But it does go to the city manager.
This group is, is a working group to the city manager.
And the city manager does go to every commission meeting. So, is he just keeping that information to himself and then, I mean, obviously he shares something to the commission. I know it hasn't happened yet, but I just, it's hard for me to see the steps here, especially when I read this document about the responsibilities that we have.
Well.
Does that make sense? I mean, I hope I'm not trying to.
Yeah, so how do we get, how do we get the planning board involved?
You know, I, Section 70-10, Item D, redevelopment, reconstruction, the Planning and Zoning Board may make and adopt, and you can read the rest of it, you know. Admittedly, our downtown was, our central business district, as I like to call it, was majorly damaged by the two hurricanes. It was mostly damaged the south side before the hurricanes. We would love, and I think I speak for this board, to see something decent happen downtown. I know that while we cannot actually do any work or spend any money, we can certainly modify some of the land development regulations to make them more compatible with something that the owner of that land would like to build and something that, I mean, I think can speak for the board, we'd all love to have a few more restaurants here in this town. We'd like to see a little more retail other than our typical t-shirt shops, so.
Tattoo parlor.
You know.
My four-year-old doesn't need a tattoo parlor.
Anything we can do to help is what I think this board is saying.
And not only just from the downtown corridor, but I mean, even like the John's Pass stuff or even the, the entry coming over the bridge. I mean, I look at that bullet point D, and I mean, when it comes to, you know, seriously damaged by hurricane, I mean, you know, this board should be talking, using that money to figure out how to help out the people that own the John's Pass parcels and the club and, I mean, any of the commercial stuff.
May I be recognized?
Certainly.
Thank you. I just would like to say that I, in hearing this, I would like there to be more transparency and I'd like us to be, the Planning and Zoning or LPA, to be involved as well, more than, I mean, we've only had one meeting, but now that it's come to everybody's attention, I think that would be really important for us to work together and in concert so that we're not stepping over each other's toes and, you know, we can make it work more efficiently to what everybody wants to see happen.
Well, we're one team.
Right.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I guess we're just getting going and, you know, certainly what I can say is needed is if you've got ideas on projects, programs, and initiatives that fall into housing, infrastructure, and economic revitalization, then we need to connect. So, I can kind of add it to the whole, you know, a list, right? Because that's where, you know, the value, you know, our community best from your districts or from your expertise. So, as it relates to specifically the CDBG-DR, which is just the focus of this group at this time, yeah, you know, sharing, you know, what you think is a priority, I, I'd love to hear it and I know the, the working group would love to hear it too.
I think what, at least for me, what I'm asking, and it seems that other people are asking this as well, is we want to, as much as we want to share with you, we want you to share with us.
Absolutely. Well, you know.
Whether it's a summary or having a meeting before our meetings or after or what have you, so we, if we choose to participate, we're able to, within our constraints, our legal constraints, I think we'd like to do that.
Yeah, so I'm happy, you know, like, you know, I just drafted our summary notes from our first meeting, so those will be available hopefully, you know, before I leave today so I can coordinate with Ms. Catherine, because again, remember, I don't know exactly on how the information flow happens around here, but yeah, you know, so, so summary notes will be available. Again, our door is open right now. We've agreed to meet on Mondays at 1:00. And so, that, that'll be in person or via Teams. I don't think, you know, I know that it's not the manager's intention to, to keep anybody away, but right now, we're just trying to understand the CDBG-DR, you know, component. But again, we need to identify our unmet needs, you know, over the next couple of months and ultimately prioritize what kind of ask we want to make from Treasure Island to the county for this.
You know, it's one thing that I'd like to bring up. It's something that Ross Sanchez has brought up in the past and this is the big opportunity to do it. The city of Treasure Island just spent a ton of money on the entrance to our city along 107th Avenue. The Majule Palms that survived, which most of them did, the landscaping that survived looks good as soon as it makes its recovery. But something as ridiculous as those fences coming in here, I have a certain segment of fence that I'm watching to see how long it takes to be repaired. I know that it should not be this board or the city of Treasure Island's effort to get those people that own those properties to come up with a decent, uniform-looking fence, but quite frankly, as Ross pointed out, as long as over a year ago, it looks terrible. And it looks even worse after the storm.
That are in the city of St. Pete?
Unfortunately, they are in the city of St. Pete. A lot of them have come back with the white vinyl fencing, but.
Our landscaping plans for that should have just had a hedge that goes all the way down. So, and we paid a lot of money for some landscape designer to put in what was there and it died three weeks later. So, you know, if, again, something, I mean, it's a hot button for me because our amazing public work staff is out there mowing the yard, trimming the trees, and you've got all these nasty fences down both sides of it. And, you know, our team's out there working their tail off to make it beautiful for us as we drive into our city, but then you've got the city of St. Pete not doing their part. And I understand that they're privately owned fences, but, you know, when it comes to planning for the future and downtown and welcoming this new beautification of Treasure Island, the new landscape design should be having hedges that block all them ugly fences that we don't have to deal with.
And we could talk about this another time, but that was when, that's what initially got me involved with Treasure Island. And I went to the commission and, and Stacy and talked about the landscaping and begged for something that would.
It was amazing.
Hide those fences and other things. Long story short, they said they would do it and then backed out on their word.
You know what's even more frustrating is you ride down the road and you see these contractors doing these fences and they are just ripping the living.
Oh, yeah. You're true.
The cinder blocks across there, they're digging through it. You know, we spent so much money to plant, we spent another bunch of money to plant, then we had the storm and then they're down there just.
Treasure Lane and.
Airing it up.
Treasure Lane and Paradise Causeway. Treasure, Treasure Lane and Paradise Causeway. He's right on that one. Well, Jackie's in there doing the permit stuff, so she can't, I mean, she tries. I know she tries to.
Regardless.
Anywho.
There's a big pile of money. That's almost a billion dollars.
Let's just see how it goes.
It should not be a municipality's business to prepare, to repair something as basic as fences, but it'd be nice to have a uniform interest. But the other thing is, and Jennifer's exactly right, I'm not sure what the plant species needs to be, but a nice eight-foot hedge would solve the problem.
Yep.
So.
Anyway, just a suggestion. Go ahead, Grant. Yeah, so moving away from the landscaping just for a minute. Last meeting, you were here, Joan, I asked you specifically about the criteria associated with obtaining block grants. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Are you going to be able to provide some information on the criteria associated with them?
Yes, Mr. Smith, I'm still hunting down. I think the criteria will be different. What I learned on these work, on these support function calls and housing, infrastructure, and economic revitalization is there's going to be different criteria in each of those buckets. However, I did learn our data point around the percentage of our population that is low to moderate income. And from the 2020 census, that is 21.8% of our population falls into low to moderate income. And that's about as much as I've learned since we last saw each other.
So, there's a, there's a means testing for income associated with obtaining the grants?
For some of them, yes.
Okay. For the housing, I would guess.
Well, and again, it depends on how the county ultimately ends up structuring each of the criteria in each of these buckets. You know, housing traditionally is more like a weight for evaluating applications, a weight for low to moderate income is definitely there for housing. I'm not quite sure if economic revitalization and infrastructure would have the same weighted criteria that they'll be asking us to, you know, so when they evaluate our plan of action, you know, that's as important as maybe something else.
So, that criteria is evolving as they work together?
That criteria is evolving and has not been published by the county.
And the county is the one that is creating the criteria?
Correct.
Okay.
Go for it there, Gary.
The second question, one.
Let Grant finish and then go for it, Gary.
As far as I understand, I should say.
Okay, that's great. You mentioned 30 additional funding sources that this group has uncovered? Did I hear that correct?
Well.
That's separate from the block grant?
No.
Okay.
The CDBG is just one out of those 30. So, if you think about what are the, the resources we're going to have collectively to rebuild and recover, you know, you can start with the feds with FEMA PAA, FEMA PAB, FEMA PAC. So, I, so I counted those as 1, 2, 3. And then when you add in Treasure Island General Fund and this fund and this cash reserve, I came up with 30 different potential funding opportunities for us depending on what priorities we select for programs, projects, and initiatives as we recover.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
And, and I think this is, as an example, I was in another meeting just with our insurance team. So, we'll have the ability to, it's, it's going to be a big puzzle. So, somebody asked, you know, the question, well, what are our insurance proceeds? Well, you know, that's still a work in progress. We don't know how much the city's going to get from our insurance coverage yet from the storm, but how we choose to use insurance proceeds with, you know, this building as an example. Well, we might want to use insurance proceeds to pay for whatever we need for this building, but we might actually get more benefit if we were to position the repair of this building into another funding bucket. So, there's going to be, you know, that's where, you know, kind of the puzzleness to our, our rebuilding and recovery is going to get quite fun to figure it all out because it's, it's, yeah.
Thanks.
It's complicated.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Gary.
Wow. When you see 30 sources, my God, Joan, that is such a huge bucket to deal with. And let me go back to where I was before and I'll come backwards again. So, we'll have to have grant writers write, to write these. Do we have them available?
We're, we're looking into them now. That was just like one of the suggestions that the working group gave us on Monday. You know, clearly, just as we started to look at just the CDBG-DR, how hard it is because each bucket's going to have its own criteria, that was just one of the recommendations they came, came out with. So, we've, we're now trying to find out who the best grant-writing person for CDBG-DR is for us so we can bring that forward and put that in place.
Is there a target date out there that we've got to reach and be ready for this?
The best estimate at this point for the county, $814 million, and of course, we're all not competing for that. It'll be a slice of, let's just call it 20% of the 814 is what we'll be competing for. The best estimate at this point is late spring, early summer. We've got to have our one-to-two pager ready to go and, you know, be ready then. That's when they would open up the application portal for us to put in our.
It's a tough task. It's not easy. It's going to be a tough task.
And, and I think, oh, well, I'm not going to say what I think. Never mind.
Where's the other 80% go?
It'll, it'll go to the county's needs or specifically to meet the low to moderate component to those dollars.
Just for the record, if there are any insurance proceeds from the old buildings, they can go towards new buildings that the city's going to build. That's just something that I got to throw out there. And if you are working into different grant opportunities, see if you can get any money for the golf course because that's a pride of this island and let's, want to make sure that that stays in place, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on.
Nice meeting, nice meeting you.
I have one last question.
Catherine, you, you have more, obviously.
Oh.
I, well, I would.
Is there something else related to Joan that you?
Yeah, I apologize. So, to Noah, are two of us able from the planning board to attend the meeting?
It would be a little iffy as long as you're not discussing things that. It would be a little iffy, as long as you're not discussing things that will come before either the LPA or the PNZ.
Because it will all come before it.
Come before the LPA and PNZ, you could, but you couldn't have any discussions there regarding matters that are going to come before the board.
So knowing that that's basically their, the construct of what they're doing, then how can we combine the two so that if any board member, two or more want to attend, can we have them come after our meetings and make that part of our agenda? I'm just-
I see Joan-
Just let it, let it, in my opinion, just let it roll. I mean, we're going to see it anyway. And then you can, rather than burden your Monday time slot.
Joan did mention having summary reports prepared. Maybe that's something that staff could present at this board's meetings, so you have that information to work with when you're using the 70-10 planning stuff we were talking about earlier. That's kind of how I envisioned it, but.
Can we just have this as an agenda item every meeting for the next six months or whatever?
Yeah, we could have staff report and have Joan here, so.
I think that would be good if we could have Joan here. Let's just go with Joan. We won't be a part of it, then if it's going to be a problem, Noah says, then maybe I shouldn't be trying to request attendance meeting.
If just one member is there, wouldn't be a problem. The problem comes out of it being sunshine law.
Because it's all going to come, so we'll, we'll draw that request back for me then. And then hopefully Joan can come forward, and we can have just a snapshot of something that, I mean, it would just be good as we go along.
Okay, go ahead, Catherine. Let's wind this thing up.
And I just wanted to caveat some of the things, like she's identified, they, this group has identified 30 potential funding sources, but keep in mind, a lot of this FEMA money is going back to reimburse things that the city has spent, debris, this, 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 that has come out of the city's funds. So it's not all just floating money.
Yeah, it's not like we hit the Powerball, people.
But a lot of it, like you said, where it goes is the question, but it, a lot of it's going back into the city's budget, you know, and into the city's funds because this was not, this was, we have reserves to cover stuff like this, but then we, you know, and I can't really, I'm not going to speak anymore on budget, but just keep in mind that this money came from somewhere to begin with, the FEMA stuff. The city needs money.
Hopefully, we can use some of that money to get these poor fire and police department guys out of their little cubes out there that are pretty horrifying.
Well, the city commission did authorize them to go forward with working on a design, so.
Do I need to make a motion to have that an indefinite agenda item?
We wouldn't need a motion, but if we get a, you know, vocal confirmation from everyone, just make sure that's what everyone on the board wants.
Sure, let's just have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let's include that. This board is headed in the direction, obviously, from our last meeting on this, that there are a group of, six of us here, and Chris and Chris Downing as well, would just like to see some positive things happening with our central business district, you know, the Gators property, I'm not going to call it our Gators property, and, you know, the club as well. Things are happening on the Treasure Bay property, but due to the storm, it's going to need something too. So it's all positive, you know, we just want to see good things. But go ahead, Catherine.
I just wanted to give an update on Elevate TI, more commonly known as the Terrain Modification Program. So at the LPA Board Meeting in December, the board recommended that this program go forward with eight specific criteria. Those were that no fill is required, no seawalls are required, no docks, no mandate, sign-and-sealed drainage plan, no height requirements. So basically, what that has become is a completely voluntary program. So if people want fill, this is the program, which will cover the fill requirements. If they don't want fill, they don't need any. So I just want to emphasize that this is made up of eight ordinances that affect the land development regulations. There are a lot of other important things in there when we change the stormwater that have rippled through the code. They went into the Marine to being able to elevate seawalls, to affect the zoning regulations. So this has gone through our code from the building code to the floodplain code, to the stormwater code, to the zoning code, to the Marine code. So it has rippled throughout. So this, this is an extensive package of amendments that are included in this Terrain Modification Program. So I want to make sure that everyone understands what the commission has told staff to do is to take this forward and to bring it to them as a completed, with these changes incorporated into the manual and incorporated into the code. We're working on that now. It's going to the commission. First hearing will be on March 18th, with the second public hearing would be scheduled for April 1st. But I just want everyone to understand that there is no mandates in this code. If you use fill, you follow the manual as to how you use it, but there's not a mandate to have fill. So what we were talking about earlier, where somebody wants to add a foot of fill, that's perfectly allowed. You could have zero all the way up to the goal height. And the goal height for low floor on a house, I believe, is 7.5. So this has now become a completely voluntary program. The other things that a lot of people had concerns about were accumulative CSI. That was removed before you saw it in December. And the other was taking the 50% to 49. That was also removed before you saw that in December at the commission's direction. So we are now going forward with the program as recommended by the LPA and as directed by the commission.
Catherine, can I ask you the question somewhat in reverse?
Sure.
So, because you said if they're wanting to bring fill, obviously, they have those conditions, but it still follows the Terrain Modification Manual?
Just the manual, yes, as to how.
As to how, however. So I'm going to ask the question, if someone wants to bring in fill, they can do it with us, with the conditions. Is there anything else that's big-ticket items that we need to be on the lookout for that is outside of a sign-and-sealed drainage plan?
So what's in the manual and what has always been in there is more topographic information. We're right now struggling a lot with drainage plans because there's not sufficient information to determine that it's not going to drain on neighbors' property. So there's a very specific type of survey required, but that's been in the program from the beginning. It's nothing new.
My comments on that, if I could, having been in that business for 30 years, it's just your typical, topographic survey. And you will have to, and surveyors do have the right to go on your neighbor's yard, but you will have to go into your neighbor's lot about 50 feet, you know, to make sure that you are not draining your water onto his lot. There's a lot of problems with that. You know, it's a situation, there's only three types of drainage in the whole world. You either drain it from the back of your lot to the street, from the middle of your lot to the seawall and to the street, or the worst kind is from the street back to the seawall. It's not hard. It's not hard at all. You know, but one thing I did want to make the clarification of, you know, the comment was made, oh, all we needed to do was remove the, the word "not" from our ordinance. This board knows that that's not correct because we've heard about what I am now calling removal of the prohibition of fill from Treasure Island. You know, we've heard this initially in December of 2023. I'm looking forward to getting rid of that prohibition. And, you know, a prime example, Carmen Peachey was just here. He said that it's not cheap, but then again, who wants to go through three feet, four feet of fill, I mean, excuse me, four feet of water inside your house? You know, nobody does. Nobody does. Even your garage. Let me tell you, I live in a stealth house. It was still not fun. So thank you for all your efforts, Catherine. I know it's been a challenge, but I think we've boiled it down to something that people can live with, but just informally, I have talked to a lot of people who are rebuilding houses. I mean, a lot. And not one has said, no, I am not going to want my house raised a little bit, provided if you have a garage, it's not supposed to be finished. It's supposed to be designed so it can take water. Well, mine was designed that way. It's a pain in the neck. And the only one that I think is making a major mistake that I have seen is at 43 Dolphin Avenue, and the man is building a house there right now, and the finished floor of his garage is going to be elevation five, which means if we ever get a lane again, he's going to have three feet of water inside his garage. Well, that's his choice. You know, that is absolutely the way we want it. If, if he wants to go through that, more power to him, but I want to have the average citizen in Treasure Island to have the ability to raise his lot, the finished floor of his garage, to an elevation where he doesn't have to go through that anymore. The only thing that he cannot do, and what we must be very careful of, and it's very easy, do not drain your stormwater onto your neighbor's lot. And while what happens is, and I've seen this over the years many times, is you initially grade the lot so it does not drain on your neighbor's yard. It has to stay that way forever. And a lot of times with fences, landscaping, and whatnot, things do change over the years. And it's just something we got to work with. There's been a lot of misunderstanding on this whole program, but the bottom line is, is one thing, nobody wants to go through this again, and we need to get rid of that prohibition of fill onto this island, and that's it. And this is the quickest way to do it because it'd be interesting to know, Jess, and maybe you might know off the, off the cuff of, how many houses have been torn down and are getting rebuilt right now? There's not.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Well, there's-
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head.
We're working on those numbers now. We were asked for those numbers.
And the commission on Tuesday.
There are several. I mean, there's houses that are coming down on Sunset Beach that are coming down, but you don't see anything, any plans for them to come back.
Yeah, that's the correlation we're trying to make of the ones that have come down, how many have a permit in, and of the ones that have a permit in, how many are to elevate and how many are to rebuild.
Well, you know, Catherine, the one comment I keep hearing is, oh, we just want a simple fill ordinance. Well, you know, we all want a simple fill ordinance, but the thing is, we need it now. We don't need to throw the baby out with the bathwater in the way of this manual. It's a good manual. It takes the Florida Housing Administration, Federal Housing Administration guidelines, and customizes them to Treasure Island. Grading lots is not hard. Like I described earlier, there's only three types. And a flat city like Treasure Island, there's usually only two types, but it's something we need to get on the books so we don't end up in the future, if this ever happens again, and we end up with houses with four feet of water in them, and the people are going, why the hell didn't we do something? Well, we're doing something, so.
Catherine.
Thank you to everybody who's made this effort, and thank you to this board for hanging in there.
Yeah, no, it's great. Sorry for the rework and all that other stuff, Catherine, but I do have a question for like the residents that are out-
Have rewritten these ordinances about a few million times.
I know, but it's worth it, so we appreciate you being flexible with us. For the, for the residents that are out there that are in the process of talking to an architect or whatever, should they be waiting to, so could they submit their housing permit for a brand-new build, and then once this goes live, if it goes live per the approvals, then they could make the change during the process? Or should they, should they be waiting?
Yeah, they could come in with a revision, but they would have to plan ahead. I think it's kind of like the gentleman who was here, I think it was for the Pearl, who said, hey, I'll just make my pilings longer, and if I have to cut them off later, I will. You know, like, just plan ahead that you're thinking that you may want to do this.
Okay.
And it's also, in its, as proposed form right now, very flexible. So you could put zero feet of fill, one foot, two feet, or maybe two and a half, depends on what your goal height is. There is a max, but there's no min.
Okay. And then, again, sign-and-sealed delivery is, so does that process eliminate, like, the additional engineering that could potentially be out there from the city side if a, because in our conditions, we have the sealed drainage plans go in with the application?
They're required now.
Okay.
It's just that these are more clear as to what those requirements are. That's already a requirement in our code.
Okay.
If you're doing any kind of land alteration.
Okay. And then, so what would you say would be the go-live date pending future approvals when it comes to this thing? Because I know contractors, I know if you're a seawall contractor, a pool contractor-
Seawall contractors are waiting anxiously for this, this thing.
Correct.
Is what I'm hearing. So if it's heard on April 1st, I was just going to discuss this with Jen. We had it to go into effect the last time we wrote it, the first day of the following month. So that would be May 1st.
Okay.
Just to give people time to get ready. But we could make it effective immediately, but that gives people no time to prepare plans for it.
Okay.
So we were trying to give them some leeway and some heads up that it's coming. Also, every person that we meet with and the permits that we review, we make sure that they have a note in there that this thing is pending. And so they may choose to, choose yes, no, you know, but try to give people a heads up and make sure they're aware that this is pending.
Yeah, I would encourage them to go ahead with their plans if they want to get going at this point, but I think it will be a situation where the prohibition of imported fill into Treasure Island does go away in one form or another.
Yeah.
And let's put it this way, like I've always said, and like people at this board are going to be building new houses. If I could have done it 20, eight years ago, I would have raised my house two foot higher than it currently is.
And I just want this board to understand, there is a lot of fixes to the code in this terrain package. So we're hoping that, you know, some of these things resolve some of the, for instance, right now, there's a pro, you have to build on pilings. That would go away in the Elevate program with the whole updates to the floodplain ordinance. So there's things in the building and floodplain ordinance that go along with this ability to use fill that would benefit some people. So it's more than, it's, as you know, the people who have been on the board and have reviewed this for over a year, this is an entire stormwater program and an update to the floodplain regulations, which ripples through six other chapters of the code.
Thank you very much, Catherine.
Thank you. That's all I have is-
Okay, our next LPA meeting, if we have one, is March 13th, 2025. Do you think we'll have one, Catherine? LPA on the 13th. That's our usual scheduled one.
I don't think we need to have a separate meeting because now most of the things we're, we don't have any ordinances that I have queued up right now.
Okay.
So to my knowledge, no.
Well, I was going to say next, the next PNZ is on the 20th of March, and we're always happy to just extend it on like we did today and have an LPA meeting.
Afterwards.
I mean, I think this board has indicated in the past a lot that, hey, we'd rather have one meeting a month than having to come here twice.
Let me revoke that. I probably am going to have a sign ordinance for you in-
On the 20th?
On the 20th.
Sign ordinances are fine. We can, nobody can ever agree on them.
Mr. Chairman, I will not be present in the March 20th meeting due to-
Have fun up there in Dennisbrook.
Thank you, sir.
I have a problem on the 20th, too. Could the date, could we get another date?
The 20th?
Yeah.
Well, we'll see if we get a quorum or not. Right now, if Jennifer, Grant, Marvin, Chris, and I can make it, you don't need to be here.
On the 20th?
You know, I mean, that's just the way it is. If we got a quorum, we're going to meet.
Okay.
Not that we wouldn't appreciate your presence, Gary, but, you know, we all have lives beyond this, and hey, we got a standing, Mr. Sanchez has a standing date up at Dennisbrook.
I have to Fisher, I won't be here on the 20th.
Okay. All right. Anything else this afternoon? Thank you very much for all your attention. All I can say at this point is, let's see what we can do to make this city a better place because it, this storm was not, these two storms were not what was needed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, we adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.